Madam Chair, you are live.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 27, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Ms. Whitmore, will you conduct role?
Yes, Supervisor Day, Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Chair Ayers.
Here.
Supervisor McDaniel and Supervisor Lewis is absent.
We will now offer an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you would like to, please stand.
Heavenly Father, once again, we thank you for your many blessings. We ask for special blessings for Chris Slaton and his family as they deal with their medical issues. We ask blessings for the families of those that made the ultimate sacrifice and were remembered on Memorial Day as they sometimes have a hard time dealing with that day every year. We ask that you provide the supervisors with the wisdom and the courage to make the best decision for the people of Rockbridge County. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will hold citizens' comments near the beginning of the meeting. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the Raise Your Hand feature. You can press the Raise Hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you are calling in by telephone. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, actually, tonight, there is one. The, there was a presentation from Bright Speed, an update on fiber in builds in the county scheduled for tonight. The representative who's going to be here is from North Carolina. He contacted me and he was extremely apologetic. He had something come up, couldn't be here tonight from North Carolina. And we talked about it, and I'd rather he keep rolling with projects than come up here and he can come up at either your June 9 or June 23 meeting to provide that presentation.
Thank you. We will now welcome citizen comments unrelated to the public hearings. When your name is called, please address the board at the podium, saying your first and last name and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. There's a timer on the table for your convenience. Is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
No one online with their hand raised.
Okay. Is there anyone in the meeting room who wishes to address the board but did not sign up to speak? And again, this is unrelated to the public hearings that we have. All right, then we will move on. Approval of the minutes. We have four sets of minutes, gentlemen. Monday, April 14, April 28, May 5, and May 12. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes?
I move to approve all the minutes as presented.
Okay. All right. Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes. School appropriation resolution. Mr. Harrison.
Yes, there's one grant for the school in an amount of $628, and that's from the Perkins Grant, and that's for a CTE.
Okay.
And that is all for them.
All right. Question? Comments for Mr. Harris?
Move to approve.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day, and I vote yes. And the county financial report and appropriation resolution, Mr. Harrison.
Yes, the total amount of bills this period is $474,775.30. Additional appropriations include $33,203 for the Tyler ERP contractual services, $1,049 for the treasurer, $22,202 for the solid waste. That's the site prep and maintenance, but that's the Goshen fence. And $75 for fire and rescue. As you recall, last time, we didn't have the balance sheets ready, but they were included in this month's. And the finance, IT, and school division staff continue to work together on attending training for the new Tyler ERP, and that's going well.
Thank you. All right. Your motion to adopt the resolution?
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration of outdoor events, application for Holes Drive-In, Mr. Suter.
Yes, in accordance with county code, Holes Drive-In has submitted the attached in your package outdoor event application. The application describes a concert series to be held on the stage constructed in the front of the movie screen. The scheduled events is included in the application. It does include 12 events stretching from now into October. The, the events are proposed to be held prior to regularly scheduled movies and music within by 8:30 PM. So they're on regularly scheduled movie nights just prior. The medical and security plans have been reviewed by Sheriff McFadden and Fire Rescue Chief Nathan Ramsey, who have both approved and signed those. An executive director, Rihanna Sheaf, I believe is in attendance tonight. They're, and I, Doug, mess your name up again? Slide, okay. And she's here to answer any questions that the board may have.
All right. Would you like to offer any comments? Just, gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Will this be an annual? And so they'll have to come back annually for approval?
Yes.
And you've already started? Okay.
Okay, just for the, for the record, because we can't pick that up on the mic, yes, is would be annual. And the question was, has it, have you started? And the answer was this weekend, this coming weekend.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day, and I vote yes. Broadband project, oh, sorry, we are taking that off the agenda. Hear that in June. Next, we'll set Mr. Dryden on the public hearing to consider amendments to Article 9 transient occupancy tax in the county code.
There was a recent bill that was passed in the state legislature, which would now require the intermediaries such Airbnb or other companies to file monthly reports with Commissioner of Revenue identifying where the money comes from and payment to Commissioner of Revenue. This will forego the obligation for current owners of short-term rentals who go through such intermediaries from filing monthly reports to the Commissioner of Revenue. And that will be replaced by an annual attestation that the runners, the people that own and operate short-term rentals will have to file, and the Commissioner of Revenue will be authorized to prepare an attestation form. The purpose of this is, the purpose of setting this public hearing is that we will need to amend our current tax code in order to implement some of the language which is in the new bill. So we're requesting you today to set a public hearing, set to allow us to advertise for public hearing for the meeting that would be at the end of June.
Thank you. Your motion to schedule a public hearing?
I move.
Second.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Consideration to set public hearing on ordinance permitting the payment of bonuses to certain employees.
That's actually wrong on your paper. It's actually Mr. Harris.
I guess this, this came, Social Services brought this to our attention. The state is the same as the compensation, state compensation board providing the one and a half percent bonus to the constitutional offices. They're doing the same for Social Services. But they brought it to our attention in order for them to get the bonus. They have to certify that the locality has adopted a ordinance in accordance with Virginia Code Section 15.2-1508, which is pretty straightforward. It just says you can do bonuses, but you shall do it by ordinance. So that was new to us. As you are aware, this came up at the last moment, and we, it was unrealistic to ask Mr. Dryden to draft an ordinance even though it was simple with it with one hour before the packets were due. So, so we will have that ordinance available for you, but we're asking for that to be set for public hearing for June 23. And as you are aware, in the budget, those bonuses are clearly, for the constitutional officers are clearly identified, a separate line item in the adopted budget.
Right.
And I'll note too, the, the reason for setting these on with a 14-day notice for the 23 instead of the 9 is because it is Tuesday in order to get the, the ad in. It would have had to have been done this morning, so.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Your motion to schedule a public hearing for June 23?
So move.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day. And I vote yes.
Thank you.
We have 18 minutes before our public hearings will begin, so we'll take a short recess.
You want to do board comments first, or?
Would you like to do board comments?
Pretty good.
Would you like to? Sure, let's, let's start with board comments. Do you have one?
I'd just like to read a statement regarding the Natural Bridge Zoo.
Okay.
That the Animal Control Unit of the Commonwealth of Virginia Attorney General's Office has been controlling all aspects of the litigation involving the Natural Bridge Zoo. Rockbridge County is a party in the case and name only. Neither the Board of Supervisors nor the county administration have had any role prosecuting the litigation or authority to enforce any court orders or be involved in the care or transportation of any animals subject to court order. And if anybody in the public have questions or concerns regarding this matter, they should be directed to the Attorney General's Office, and the phone number is on the table. You can take it with you. Well, we appreciate all your calls and emails. You're calling and emailing the wrong people.
Thank you. Any other board comments? We will take a short break. Six o'clock.
For anyone currently watching or auditing this after the fact, your screen's going to blank for a little bit. Tune back in at six o'clock, and you will pick the meeting back up.
Just getting them in place.
Okay, you're back live.
Good evening. Now we convene our meeting. Mr. Whitmore.
Yes, we have, we have three public hearings scheduled for this evening. The first on the agenda, Abigail C. Logan, 262 Tinkerville Road, Glasgow, Virginia, has made an application for a zoning map amendment. The properties are owned by Abigail C. Logan and are located on the south side of Tinkerville Road, Route 684, approximately .52 miles east of the intersection of South Lee Highway, Route 11, and Tinkerville Road. of South Lee Highway, Route eleven, and Tinkerville Road. The properties are identified as tax map numbers ninety-six dash A dash twenty-three A, sixteen point nine eight acres per tax records, and ninety-six dash A dash twenty-three B, point eight seven acres per tax records. The two tracks total seventeen point eight-five acres per tax records. The properties are located in the Natural Bridge Magisterial District. The application is to rezone the two parcels from the General Business B-one zoning district to the Agriculture and General Uses A-two zoning district. On April ninth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission held its public hearing. One citizen spoke in favor of approving the application, citing the owner's desire to continue farming on the property. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the application to rezone two parcels from General Business B-one zoning district to the Agriculture and General Uses A-two zoning district. And at this point, no additional comment has been received on the application either way. So, and in attendance tonight, we have Dr. Abigail Logan for any questions on the application. And then on the map to orient everyone, for those that are familiar with the intersection of Tinkerville Road and Route eleven, right there near exit one eighty, then you turn on to Tinkerville Road, and it's a short distance on the right where Dr. Logan's property is. And then also on the zoning map, it is surrounded by additional B-one parcels there. So, and I think a lot of people are surprised that that is B-one, that far off of that interchange there. So, but her desire is to rezone to continue using the property as it's being used, so.
Thank you. Is Dr. Logan here now?
Yes.
Would like to speak? Good evening. Malcolm, do you have anything you would like to add?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
I said it right into the microphone, right? Good?
Anybody have any questions? All right, then I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone?
There's no one signed up.
No, anyone online?
Uh, no one with a hand raised.
Anyone on the audience that would like to speak to this? If not, I will close public hearing. Gentlemen?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Hey, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. We will move on.
All right, the second public hearing on the agenda. Lexington Golf and Country Club, WNL Joint Venture LLC, one forty-one Country Club Road, Lexington, Virginia, has made a special exception application for the proposed improvements and expansion of the existing Lexington Golf and Country Club. The property consists of six tax parcels within the county that total one hundred and thirty-one point eight-nine-four acres per tax records. The portion of the existing country club that is in the county is located in the general residential R-one zoning district. A portion of the existing golf course, twenty-one point seven-two acres, per city tax records is located in the city of Lexington. Due to the fact that LGCC predate zoning in Rockbridge County, the use is considered a legal non-conforming use in the R-one district. A portion of the existing golf course, twenty-one point seven-two acres, per city tax records, is located in the city of Lexington. The preliminary discussion of the project was held on March twelfth, twenty twenty-five by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission then held its public hearing on April ninth, twenty twenty-five. Upon motion and vote, the Planning Commission set the matter over to its May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. During the public hearing, concerns expressed included increased traffic along Country Club Road, structural capacity of Roughner Place Bridge, increased noise pollution associated with events at the club, water and soil contamination associated with the use of herbicides and fertilizer, decreased distances from the proposed course to neighboring properties, and the lack of notice given to some area residents. During the discussion, the Planning Commission members expressed concerns on lighting associated with the facility, noise mitigation for the pickleball courts and pool, the proposed proximity of the pickleball courts and pool to neighbors, adequacy of parking, water quality concerns due to runoff, lack of buffer around streams, access road to the country club, increased number of special events and associated operating hours and well testing. On May eighth, twenty twenty-five, the zoning administrator made the formal determination that the non-conforming use of a special event venue at Lexington Golf and Country Club is neither allowed nor permitted as part of a special exception for a country club. Therefore, separate actions will be required to be taken in order for the property to be utilized for special events. The actions would include a zoning text amendment to provide for the use as a special exception in the R-one district, or to amend the current definition of a country club to include special events. The decision would not prevent the country club from hosting events or party for members of the country club. And at May fourteenth, Planning Commission meeting, continued discussion on the application, and they voted to recommend approval of the application with the following conditions. And there are, there are eleven listed conditions in your packet. I can go through them, or I can give bullet points on them. And then Mr. Russ Orson, the lead engineer on the project, is here for questions and additional information.
Gentlemen, what would you like? Would you like to have them read? Or do you have any specific questions on those eleven? There was considerable, let's say, a little bit of confusion about what the planning commission did, from the public's point of view, about what the planning commission did by the noise ordinance. And I think that the confusion was the planning commission did not left it to the county noise ordinance because of the expectation that the special event would happen later, and that issue would be dealt with later. Am I misrepresenting that?
I, I think that is correct from a facility standpoint, and the fact that movement ahead on the golf course is the primary objective right now, and then the construction of the facilities, if you will, including the clubhouse and the outdoor event pavilion would, would come in a phased approach from there.
The pavilion could be built before the actual, before that, that process goes forward, correct?
Before they come back for the special exception process. I, it's my understanding that.
Yes.
Yes.
Just, they, they can build the pavilion, but it would be subject to their existing rights of use, not to, not to, not attached to the special exception. So if they build the pavilion, and it's part of the special exception, then it would be subject to our definition of country club at the time it's done. So in other words, that would tie into the fact that, can you have, in the future, once it's operating as a country club, under the current definition, could they have wedding venues or special events there? And that's an issue that we're going to be addressing later with the zoning text amendment.
Gentlemen, would you like these read? Or do you have, would you like to do bullets? I'll leave it up to you.
I was gonna also add that we have received additional comments on the application. And I will read the names of those that submitted. Barbara Walsh, Stephen Low, Douglas Caldwell, and Lawrence Hammer. And that would be since the Planning Commission meeting on the fourteenth.
And I'll add too, just so everyone knows, those were all provided to the board as they were received, and you do have hard copies.
Then we'll move to the bullet points of these.
And these are the approved, these are the conditions as approved and specified by the Planning Commission at their meeting, where they recommended approval. Number one, substantial compliance with the schematic plans prepared by Perkins and Orson titled LGCC WNL Joint Venture LLC, Lexington Golf and Country Club dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, with a revision date of April thirty, twenty twenty-five, with the allowance of pickleball courts and/or tennis courts in the area shown as pickleball courts. Number two, hours of operation for the pickleball courts, outdoor swimming pool and playground areas shall be limited to between eight AM to nine PM. Number three, compliance with section thirteen oh three point oh three, general lighting requirements, section thirteen point oh three point oh four, general design requirements, and section thirteen point oh three point oh five, parking lot lighting of the County of Rockbridge Land Development regulations. Number four, no parking within the VDOT right-of-way along Country Club Road, Route seven eighty-nine, and New Cameron Drive, Route ten thirty. Number five, the storage of all chemicals associated with maintenance of the golf course shall be within the proposed maintenance facility, and shall be designed in a manner that prevents any spillage of chemicals from exiting the storage area. Number six, at minimum, an eight-foot fence associated with the eastern, western, and southern sides of the pickleball and/or tennis courts shall have an acoustic panel system that is weather resistant and reduces noise by twenty decibels. The design and materials of the panel system shall be shown on the site plan. The panel system shall be maintained in good condition. Number seven, pre- and post-water and sediment testing of streams, pre- and post-water and sediment testing of glyphosate compliant with EPA method five four seven, PFAS compliant with EPA method sixteen thirty-three, heavy metals, cadmium. And here we do, I need to note a correction. It's listed as cerium with an empirical table designation of CR, that should be chromium. Lead, mercury, nitrate, nitrite compliant with EPA method three five three shall be performed, samples shall be performed in Pond A and Pond One on map titled Water and Sediment Testing of Streams, map dated May twelve, twenty twenty-five. And that, that map is also in your packet to note those, those two locations. Water samples shall be taken from the water column, sediment testing shall be taken from the top one to two inches from the bed of Pond A and point one. The pre-testing shall be performed prior to the first application of glyphosate associated with initial killing of grass on the golf course. The post-testing shall take place between three to seven days after each application of glyphosate associated with the killing of the grass. After the reconstruction of the golf course, annual testing shall be performed at least once annually during the months of June, July, or August for a minimum of five years. The water and sediment testing shall be provided to the Office of Community Development within thirty days after the results provided to the landowner. Costs associated with the pre- and post-water and sediment testing of streams shall be borne by, by the applicant Lexington Golf and Country Club, WNL Joint Venture LLC, or subsequent landowner. And then point number eight, pre- and post-water testing of wells, water testing of wells for glyphosate compliant with EPA method five four seven, PFAS compliant with EPA method sixteen thirty-three, heavy metals, cadmium, there again, chromium is a substitute or is replacing cerium, lead, mercury, nitrate, nitrite compliant with, compliant with, compliant with EPA three five three point two shall be performed. Samples shall be taken on all wells on the properties owned by LGCC WNL Joint Venture that are located in the county of Rockbridge. Additionally, water testing of outside wells used as a potable water source on a landowner's property, the boundary of which property is located within one thousand feet of the property owned by LGCC WNL Joint Venture, shall be performed for all landowners within the designated area who have notified the Office of Community Development in writing within thirty days of the date of approval of the special exception permit, and who grant a right of entry to their property for purposes of the pre- and post-water testing of wells. After reconstruction of the golf course, testing shall be performed once during the months of June, July, or August. The applicant shall be required to send notification via certified mail to all applicable landowners based on public records as determined by the Office of Community Development in said area, informing them of the opportunity to have pre- and post-water testing of their wells. Costs associated with the pre- and post-water and sediment testing of streams shall be borne by LGCC WNL Joint Venture LLC or subsequent landowner. Bullet point number nine, or rather, condition number nine, implementation of the project must occur within six months of the date of the special exception approval. Project substantial completion must occur within thirty day, thirty months of the date of implementation, with up to a twelve-month extension of the substantial completion date upon a written request by the applicant and landowner to the zoning administrator detailing the reasons for the extension. Condition number ten, after discussion, Planning Commission felt that the existing noise ordinance would be sufficient to address noise concerns associated with the club activity. Number eleven, the applicant shall operate the country club as a membership organization which is formed for recreational purposes and shall provide documentation substantiating such to the zoning administrator prior to the completion of the renovation of golf course and clubhouse. Condition number twelve, approval contingent on Virginia Department of Transportation, Erosion, Sediment, Stormwater Management, Building Department, and all applicable state and federal regulations. And that's the conditions as set forth.
I'll note too, that you'd mentioned that there are eleven conditions, there's, there's, the number is, is twelve, but it's actually eleven conditions. Number ten is just a statement. You correctly identified that to start with. I was just pointing that out.
Which I could not find on my copy, actually. But it, it's fine. Yes, there, there are eleven conditions, but one statement.
Yes.
About what the planning commission.
Yes.
Found. Alrighty.
And so at this time, if Mr. Orson, the lead engineer on the project, is, is available for questions and concerns.
I will not be able to top that last presentation. That was perfect. But I wish Chris was here. I bet Neil wishes Chris was here. But starting off with the special exception, so Chris did a zoning determination, and John can help us here, that special events are not included in a country club use as defined by the twenty-two text amendment that the county did. So, in this case, according to Chris's zoning determination, special events are for non-members. So like, if I want to get married there, I can, a reception, if my kids want to, a reception, they can. But if a non-member wants to have a special event, then we need a special event, special exception. That's either right or wrong. I'm not sure, but we certainly are not gonna contest it in any way. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through this for what we're doing tonight. Then there will be a amendment to the text of what a country club is that will allow special events. Then we will come back for a special exception for special events. So what you said was exactly correct. We'll be back for special events, which has been determined to be non-members having events at the club. So that's how we'll be doing it. Correct, John?
One thing to, just to clarify too, is that the fact that some, the, the definition, when we grant this, if it's determined that a, that a special exception is granted to be a country club, the, until such time that the golf course is complete, the clubhouse is complete, and non-member organization exists with, that was in place, the, the special exception is not in place. So the can, the existing country club will be able to continue to operate as it has operated until, until that time. The reason being is our, our definition for country club is a membership organization that must have a clubhouse and a golf course. So the purpose of, if it's determined to grant this, would be to give the surety to the existing, the, the, the WNL and Lexington Golf Country Club organization, that they will be able to build the golf course, and they will be able to have the, the, the country club at the time when all those things are complete. So the functions such as the, whatever functions they are able to do now, they will continue until such time that the golf course is complete and that the clubhouse is complete.
And special events are what we do now, what we've been doing for seventy years, what we hope to continue. It's an important part of our model to have events at a country club. That is what country clubs do, which is why we were not expecting the determination that we got, but we have it, and that's the path forward. So we're all, we're all squared away on that. If you guys would turn to page four of the four sheets that I submitted, just to get the If you guys would turn to page four of the four sheets that I submitted, just to get the golf course part settled.
Viva, could, could you share that screen?
Yeah. It'll look like this, and it's not that important. It's, it's the, uh, it's the, the golf course designed by Lester George, and that's the genesis for all of the things that we're doing. It, it, as you may know, if you're a golfer, if you're not, the, uh, the greens are quite steep in the old-fashioned at, at our club. And if we're gonna cut the grass to NCA standards, then they won't hold the ball. So we have to level our greens to, uh, to be NCA compliant. So we started looking at that, or they started looking at that, and then they started saying, well, if we're gonna do that, let's start looking at lengthening the course and whatnot. So over a long period of time, you'll notice that this plan that I submitted is a master plan from twenty twenty. So a lot of smart people have been thinking about it for a long time. And we started thinking about the, the, uh, all the amenities as part of this whole deal. So this is the golf course designed by Lester George. It is a master plan, but it, the construction drawings have been done, uh, bid and are approved by, uh, the county. So if you would go to sheet three or four, unless you have questions about the golf course. If you go to sheet three or four, then this is the master plan for the whole shooting match. And I'll just go through it. You, you probably can get your bearings there. New Cameron Road is kind of going through the middle, left to right. You'll see New Cameron Road, uh, Country Club Drive is there to your right. That's the, the intersection. Then Ruffner takes off to the right, goes across the bridge, that's city property down there. So number one is the new clubhouse. You can see the new clubhouse. Uh, that is well to the right of the existing clubhouse. Um, we've been playing with the design. It is not as far to the right as it was a month ago, but it's well to the right. It's actually, that clubhouse now is sitting on basically the pool deck, if you know where the pool is, uh, right now. Um, so that's number one. Number two is the new golf bag drop and cart barn. Number three is the new event pavilion. That's to the left of the clubhouse. There's a service area in there. We will need a service area for all the back of house stuff. And then the pavilion is there so that we have good communication with the kitchen. We can have a, uh, I don't think warming kitchen is the exact right thing, but we'll have facilities at the pavilion to hold food before it's served at the pavilion. So we have good communication between, uh, the clubhouse kitchen, which is on the left side of that clubhouse, and the, uh, the pavilion. Number four is the new golf performance center. It will be, uh, for use by WNL at, uh, golf teams and by LGCC members. It will have hitting bays so that you can hit from basically a garage door, and you can be indoors hitting outdoors. So you can be there in the rain or the cold and whatnot. There will also be simulators in there for both the golf team and LGCC members. Number five, new club arrival. That's basically just the entrance off of New Cameron Road. Since this plan was done, we've actually moved it to the plan left a little bit. Uh, we're required, uh, to have site distance. So once the architects were done and the engineer took over, we had to move it to get site distance to gain VDOT approval for giving the speed limit and, and traffic on New Cameron Road. So number five is moved a little bit to the left. It's ostensibly the same. Number six, seven and eight are on the other side. If you know where the driving range is currently on the other side of New Cameron, um, that will be, that is planned for the new courts and the new pool and parking for same uh, on the other side of New Cameron Road. That includes, number seven is the new pickleball courts. We, uh, uh, have heard from our membership. Uh, we have some tennis, uh, aficionados, and, and so we are likely going with a, a couple of tennis courts that could be converted to pickleball courts. Uh, sorry, Tony. And, uh, uh, that number is still in flux, exactly how many, if you guys know or don't know, you probably know the, uh, the county does use our tennis courts for their tennis, uh, tournaments and whatnot, uh, uh, games. And, uh, and so the number of courts they require for that is four. We currently have four. We're only proposing a couple. So we are talking through that. Have no idea at this point where that's gonna land. Number eight is small playground for kids over at the tennis courts. Number nine, the new maintenance facility is, is off of Ruffner. If you go down Country Club Drive and turn right onto Ruffner, you go across that little bridge and immediately on the left currently is number not, uh, number eight green. Number eight green will not be there any longer, and that's where we're proposing the maintenance facility. Number ten, future golf cottages. So you can see dashed in by the number ten is future golf cottages there to the right of the clubhouse. We also have some over there to the left in that currently landscaped areas. We are hopeful, and, and it turns out that the WNL and talking to some of their base, uh, there's a lot of interest in having an onsite residential aspect to this. So we're hoping to do cottages in the very near future. We're not gonna be building them right away, but certainly as part of this, so that we don't come back through the process, we wanted to make you, uh, aware of those. Number eleven is, is scattered around and about, and it's a planted buffer. And, uh, on sheet number one, we describe what that planted buffer is. Just, so it's a heavy buffer of Cleveland Cypress, uh, and Arbor Whitey. Uh, number two is probably the place to look. So if you're looking on sheet number two, that's kind of a blow up of the, uh, of the clubhouse campus. Uh, if you can look through the photo, kind of at the, at the black lines there, you can see the clubhouse, the parking, whatnot. On this sheet, the, the green.
Are we in this one now? Just.
Yep, yep. On the sheet, the green blobs are the greens. Those are the greens, and the yellow blobs are the T-boxes that are, that are serving those greens. We just turned them up to, uh, so you can kind of see what's going on. The, uh, the hundred-year floodplain is also shown. There's a hundred-year floodplain associated with the creek coming into the, the main pond. Um, and then there's a floodplain associated with the creek that comes from, uh, down Country Club. And then joins, really the three creeks join below our dam. You can see there where the two uh, creeks come in on that floodplain. And that's, that's here as I can tell, that's kind of where Woods Creek proper starts is the, is the, where those creeks come together. So that is the master plan for everything that we're doing. The, we, we went to planning commission, three meetings, three months in a row. We did kind of a preliminary getting to know you. Uh, what are we up to? We did a, a public hearing. It got continued. And then at the last meeting, we hammered out the conditions, uh, that you all have in front of you. It was a lot of work. Chris helped a lot when she was here. The planning commission helped a lot. We hammered that. The, the one that we don't like as much as the rest is the, uh, is the sound deadening material for the pickleball courts. It's, it's, we're, we're doing a lot of planting. If you look back on sheet number two, we've done a lot of, of evergreen buffers for, uh, certainly attenuation of sight and hopefully some of sound. There are not that many homes that are affected, uh, that are near the pickleball courts. And we really think that even though we understand pickleball noise is a thing, uh, if you go online, you can see that pickleball noise is a thing. Um, we, we, we don't think it's a huge imposition. We currently have pickleball. For I don't know how many years we've had it, and we're just trying to continue, uh, playing pickleball. It seems to be the thing of the future. I'm not a pickleballer, but uh, it seems to be the thing of the future along with our, our tennis folks. So the conditions, we, we kind of hammered through those, and we, we think they're all logical and reasonable. And, and we appreciate all the work that was done on them. Uh, that one, we're hopeful. That, that's not a condition. We have been there for, I, I think seventy years, uh, when I pulled the, uh, the data from VDOT uh, sheet for Country Club Road, it said Country Club Road, point, whatever miles long. What does it serve? It serves two houses and a, and a golf course. That was in the sixties, and, and so a lot of people have decided they want to live close to the golf course, and that's great. Uh, they're beautiful homes and beautiful developments, and, and they have decided that they want to come close to us. I'm often up here trying to bring stuff close to people that have been there a long time. In this case, uh, we're, we're here with something that everybody decided to be close to a golf course, and it's, it's quite beautiful. So, um, I'm, I'm glad that they did, uh, close to the golf course. I'm sure I'm forgetting stuff that I told planning commission, but if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them.
Chairman, would you, any questions? I'm sure there's some.
I've got a couple. I don't know who can answer them. I think it's, it's a great project, but, um, my concerns, uh, the water testing. You've listed everything you're gonna test for. Do we have, what are we gonna measure it against is, are we going by what's acceptable? Uh, as far as the, you know, parts per million of a different chemical, and if it exceeds that, what do we do? Or, I mean, we, we spelled out you, you were gonna test, but I don't think we've really said what we're gonna do with the testing or what we're gonna compare it to, or what's a safe level, what's an unsafe level. Uh, you know, I, I think if we're gonna go to all that trouble to test, we ought to be able to determine what's a safe level. I would think we'd want to test the streams coming in to the country club because you don't want contaminants brought from outside the country club, and then all of a sudden you're blaming the country club for those contaminants as they leave the other side, if they might already have been in the stream. Uh, I just think we need to look at that a little closer on, on, on how we're gonna test the waters and what's acceptable, and what we're gonna do if it becomes unacceptable.
How many wells do we have in that area?
I think that the county said sixteen.
It's somewhere right below twenty that we would, that we have determined that are in that area for.
We have at least one on property. And then the county determined about sixteen.
And there's also in the packet, the map of those testing, the, the two different locations in there. And I think, uh, supervisor lines, so your, uh, comment, I think if, if I'm not wrong, there is a standard for golf courses. And I don't know whether Lester George, the designer on this, has contracted with them, but it is a standard that exists for, um, the maintenance and operation of a golf course over a period of, of time.
Is that a water quality standard?
I, I think so. Is that, is that correct?
I believe so, but as I know, Peter Danaher is our core superintendent. By education out of Rutgers and by profession, he is a professional. He is in charge of all of our chemical applications and whatnot. He is, uh, uh, in my opinion, uh, uh, quite brilliant at all of that. At least he comes across as that in all of the meetings that I'm in. And, uh, that's what he does for a living, and that, and compliance with every label and every uh, uh, requirement for those things that are covered by multitude of agencies. He is right on top of all of that. And then we're gonna store everything in, in our new maintenance facility. That's gonna be top shelf for storage of.
Right. I have no doubt of that.
And, and so you're, so it's an interesting thing. This is what we said at planning commission. It's an interesting thing. This is a special exception, so it's a conditional use in other places. So it's conditions that the, that the county has, has put on. These are not proffers. If they were proffers, I, I would have answers to those things because I would be proposing them. I did not propose those.
Right.
Those were proposed by the county, and so I don't know. And we're downstream of a, of a very nice subdivision with very nice lawns, and, and those lawns presumably are not beautiful just because.
Well, that's why I prefaced that, um, who would answer it, because I, I, it's not your responsibility to answer it.
Yeah, even presence of things is.
But as a county, we need to know if something goes wrong, who's responsible and what actions would take. And like, that's why I said you have to test before things get onto the golf course, like all those beautiful lawns who are probably, I would hope they would read the labels, but they might not, and it might be coming from them. And we should be able to determine that, and, and, you know, we should, if we're gonna have that in there, we should state the levels that we are willing to accept. And if we want to go with the basic standards, we should just say that.
So all of that is true and important, but we, we, we've been operating a golf course for decades and decades and decades. If we do not get the special exception, it, it would be devastating for us, but we would still operate a golf course. So the operation of a golf course is not what we're talking about. We're talking about a land use for, that's a special exception that's been an existing non-conforming use. Um, when the club expanded, uh, uh, twenty years ago, the county decided to give it a variance, which, which is utterly, I don't understand it, but anyway, so it's still an existing non-conforming use, but it's been there for seventy years. It will still be there without a special exception. So the, so maintaining a golf course as we do, it doesn't change.
Except for the fact you're not gonna go out and kill everything.
So the glyphosate, I agree with that. So killing the grass. So if you go around Rockbridge County, uh, uh, now that we're doing no-till, especially in the southern end of the county, will be a teeny tiny fraction of, of Rockbridge County application of glyphosate. But you are right, that is an application that we wouldn't do if we were just continuing.
And, and that's, that's.
But the heavy metals, the other, other.
Right. But if we're testing, we ought to have a standard to test to. That's my point.
And it may be that the, uh, EPA method five four seven and EPA method sixteen thirty-three specifies more of that in the.
Who does the testing? Is that an independent?
Oh, oh, we think that would be the methodology they use to.
It's just the methodology.
Yeah, it doesn't say, you know, a safe level of anything is it so many parts per million. All right, well, if we maintain a safe level, that's terrific. But if, if we don't test what's coming in, don't test what's coming out, and, and don't know what the safe level is, we should put that in there that we will maintain. Or if we can't, who's responsible? Because I don't want to be pointing fingers when a, a simple, some test can solve that. And I think it's mainly during the construction period. When you, when you're applying, uh, uh, more chemicals than normal and when you're operating the golf course when it's finished.
Can I, so does this specify, can't see how this specifies who does the testing, who's responsible for the testing?
At this point, other than just the applicant or the landowner being.
We would hire.
LGCC.
Environmental firm to do the testing.
Is there any reason, I noticed it's a thirty-day, could we have, is there any problem with having results the same time you would have results? What, why is there a thirty-day, within thirty days that, that the community learns about the results?
Well, other than paperwork, there'd be no problem with sharing them.
Okay, so that, you don't mind if that, that number goes down to, you know, a reasonable. The, let's see. Uh, Mr. Day, if you have questions or if you have another one, jump in. I have a few. Um, you did mention the, um, the storing of chemicals. Is that stored in a, not in the flood zone that you, the hundred-year flood?
Outside the floodplain in a, in a designated, uh, bay of our maintenance facility that will have a sump that doesn't go anywhere. That's, it's all part of the design already.
Are there gonna be lights on the pickleball slash tennis court?
Yeah, so based on the last planning commission meeting, I did add a note to the, to the master plan that, that we, all lighting has to comply with the county ordinance, which in this case is twenty-five feet even for sports lighting in this case, and then also the half a foot candle at the property.
Or I might get more complaints on lighting.
You know, yes, but I think with the buffers that are there and that we're proposing, it takes a little while for Cleveland and, and Arbor Whitey to grow, but I, I'm, I'm hopeful, one, I'm hopeful that, that it really isn't gonna be as big a deal as, as one might think. that it really isn't going to be as big a deal as as one might think.
Nick. You mentioned something about the use of the tennis courts by the school. Can you elaborate a little bit on? I may have missed what you said there.
Yeah, I can elaborate a little. I'm not sure. So so just from being out there at times. So the high school plays their matches at the country club. And there. I I think there was at one time there was a nominal fee involved, and I think it just kind of went by the wayside just. So I think it's.
I believe that I think that.
It was paid upfront. It was it was ten ten thousand dollars. It was a.
Donation to the renovation.
Yeah, and it was it was for a ten year. I think it's two thousand sixteen.
From sixteen to now?
So eight years. That's that's the, yeah, that's the that I didn't. The agreement is with the Rockbridge County School Board. I found a a copy of the just today, I found a copy of the the draft. I don't have a signed copy, but I think school board does.
Right. So a nominal fee is paid by the by the high school, by the school board to use the tennis courts. The if we only build two tennis courts, then that won't be feasible anymore because they apparently need four courts for a match.
I think currently we do the matches there. We don't we don't do the practice there. We do the practice at the high school and the matches at the country club.
My understanding is it's mainly matches.
I think that's right.
Yes.
It just to inform the board, it will be, you know, we will have to do something.
Is the plan to tear that out for this season? So for this spring, will those tennis courts be in place?
They will they will not be in place. It will be gone. The current schedule is to start eradicating grass in July and then continue to play and do what we do as long as the course is playable. And then as we as the course becomes unplayable and we move into the fall and we finish the construction drawings for the various things. We hope to do the maintenance facility first so that so that that can be a where we can where we can start, and then we will move over to the to the main campus and demolish the clubhouse and whatnot and get going on the main campus.
I I am concerned about the noise of the the pickleball. And while I understand even a few houses dealing with continual noise is 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 too much. Is there? What is it about this? Is the cost of the acoustic sound barrier that is that is a is problematic is?
Cost and maintenance and actually, a little more research, it it's based on the advertising, it might be a little more clear, but the but the condition is twenty decimals. Twenty decimals from somewhere to somewhere. I don't know, but but they do advertise those panels as having a certain reduction in sound. And so a twenty decimal reduction is actually one quarter the strength of the sound because decimals are on a a scale. It's not a linear scale. So anyway, so they do sell panels that are rated at thirty six decimals, and those are tremendously expensive. And then they go down to various curtains that are much less. I think Chris was really on top of it, but they they sell them that are like maybe twelve, fourteen, sixteen, whatever. But the condition as it was put was twenty decimal. And then the maintenance of them. So they're going to be, you know, they're going to be some kind of plastic or something, and they'll hang on the fences and in the sunlight they'll degrade. And so the ongoing maintenance of those forever seems daunting.
Well, my, again, the sound and and the, I mean, those courts are moving moving to a place they haven't been along with the pool into more of a neighborhood, established neighborhood, whether there were only two originally or or now quite quite a bit in neighborhood.
They move away from two homes and they move closer to two homes. As you can see on the map where where the existing tennis courts are down there. Mr. Rubenstein's house is there, close to it in the one uphill from him. And that's where the courts are currently. And then if you look where the courts are proposed, there's two houses there off of Coke Place. So so it it I I I'm not necessarily. It it moves away from two and it moves towards two. And with the with the significant planting, it's not perfect, but the significant planting of of evergreens, we're hoping that that the sound is deadened quite a bit. I do not know how to quantify that.
Also, the credits were a concern, and we we had discussed that, that I understand that the country club you all have bought credits, environmental credits. And those credits will be then used in a different location and not in Rockbridge County.
So water quality credits, you know, we used to just do stormwater management for quantity. You know, you would see a detention pond that would store water and release it slowly. Now, we also, for some number of years, we've also done quality, which we measure in pounds of phosphorus per year. It's it's just a marker. It's not the only thing, but that's what we use to compute it. And so when we do a design, oftentimes it's the most efficient way is to buy the credits rather than to build a complicated thing on site that takes maintenance forever and is permitted forever so that the state can make it can come and look at it whenever they want forever. However, if you need more than ten pounds of credits as a plan of common development. And so we we talked to Jonathan at Griffin, and he determined that the course, the clubhouse, the maintenance facility, everything we're doing is a plan of common development, even though it's on a different plan submittal, it's a plan of common development. So if you exceed ten pounds, you have to do seventy five percent of the water quality measures on site. You can only buy twenty five percent of the of as credits. And so we will absolutely be buying twenty five percent that we can, but we will be doing seventy five percent on site. So in the case of the the only thing that's really proceeded to construction drawings is the golf course and the maintenance facility. Maintenance facility has the 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 brand name is jellyfish, but it's a it's a dynamic separator and a filter system that we're literally filtering the stormwater before it gets into our stormwater system to get to the seventy five percent removal that we need of phosphorus. So the course earlier, Eric Allen, who designed the ENS for the golf course, had used credits for the entire golf course. However, once that determination was made, he's had to go back and redesign all of his facilities to to perform seventy five percent phosphorus removal on site. So every bit of it will be seventy five percent phosphorus removal on site.
More question before I open up the public hearing? Okay, thank you. I will now move to open the public hearing.
And we have a number of individuals signed up to speak. The first is Anna Lisa Fitzgerald, and the next will be Larry Hammer.
Good evening. My name's Anna Lisa Fitzgerald. I am a Lexington city resident. I did three minutes, right? I did hear about this just recently. My main concern is the matter in which the sod or the grass will be removed or killed using a known carcinogen, something that's toxic, adding it to our environment. One thing mentioned in the waterways, water coming in and flowing out from that brings to mind over the last almost three decades, a lot of effort has been put into making our waterway local one that starts as a little spring coming up on Boxer Wood, traveling down Sarah's Run to Woods Creek, Hauntmore River, and into James. Early on, that was found to be very toxic. And much been put efforts have been put into cleaning that up and preserving that and maintaining that. So it's very concerning to think that we might do add anything to the environment that is just known to be toxic and possibly permanent when glyphosate is in our waterway or soil. What's the half life, you know, going on, you know, into the future permanently? I have members of my family who have terminal cancer from from herbicides, having glyphosate. Make it, of course, maybe a concern to me, but but this is something that is there's no question. And if we have to say that something has to be tested, we know that it is toxic for our community. It's, you know, once it's in the soil and the waters, then we have normally wildlife and then the immediate families around that. But going on to the future, I have granddaughters who I know that if, you know, how will this be administered airborne? Will it be airborne? Will it be sprayed? It's some of this can travel as much as five miles. And just recently, I read a study when they were talking about a report of that there are new management of ways of managing at least the for for golf courses. What do you call it when you're fertilizing the soil in non-toxic ways? That's been a huge thing, you know, just in the history of golf courses in terms of being toxic to within a mile of it's very toxic to the people, the groundwater, all of that, to people who live that close. So since there are new ways, and we're talking about, yes, in the last how many nineteen years or so with the golf course, doesn't mean we go into the future if we have new information and just say, well, we'll do the way we've always done it. If there are new non-toxic ways, why not implement those? Why not begin? Why not let us let our let us be set the precedent for others going forward? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Larry Hammer, and after that, we followed by Yakin Art.
My name is Larry Hammer, and I live in the Buffalo District. I support what the golf course is doing. I think it's great. I have one concern, and that's about amplified music and noise when the course reopens. There are a large number of residents near the course that can hear the noise, not just outside, but inside the homes. I tried to map out the area. I think I gave you a copy, but I was a little bit too conservative. Talking to some of the neighbors, the music can be heard inside a house located on Rose Crest Lane. It's off of Woods Edge Drive, and I checked on the map. It's twenty six hundred feet away. There's an eighty year old woman who lives on Ruffner Place. She volunteers at the food pantry, and she clearly hear the music in her bedroom on the second floor. She's eighty years old. I count roughly seventy homes that are affected by the amplified music from the club. And in the planning meeting last time, the new owners want to run it as late as midnight on weekends. That's curious is there is a wedding venue somewhere in the county, well, elsewhere in the county, and it's near I sixty four. A business, a solar field, and a few houses. That wedding venue with few neighbors has to pull the plug at ten P M. Why would a club in a residential area be allowed to go until midnight? In a perfect world, the new club would build the proposed event center and hold all amplified functions indoors with the windows and doors closed, and they could party all night. We'd all be happy. The key word here is neighbors. In the past, the previous ownership, the course has been great. They hope they have about three events a year, sometimes four. And I'm I'm okay with that. The events rarely went past ten. And if they went past ten, it was a few minutes past ten. And that's consistent with the rules that are applied to the other places in the county. So what I'm asking for is to prevent the possibility of the new owners coming in and having a large number of events that go to midnight. I have confidence that the Board of Supervisors will look out for the residents of the county and not approve a new outside concert venue with the potential to hold multiple Washington Lee functions in the middle of a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Yakin Art, followed by Gretchen Sukla.
Yochen Arndt, I'm also from the Buffalo District. Fifty five Mossy Green Terrace is my wife's and my home. It's a straight line from the from the country club. As my neighbor Larry just mentioned, we're used to the country club having maybe three, four events a season. And usually the music runs to about ten, ten o'clock. And all that is annoying, that is certainly something we have been willing to put up with. The problem with the country club, it's located like at the bottom of the of the valley, so to speak. And having just returned from Italy, I visited some amphitheaters. And the reason why concerts are being held in amphitheaters is because the noise projects nicely up uphill. And that's exactly the problem that we fear will happen if the existing county ordinance, noise ordinance will be applied to this venue, which would essentially allow it to play music, notably Fridays, Saturdays until midnight. That's significantly beyond ten o'clock. And I assume from what I heard, I I assume that our our representative here for the for the country club community is a good businessman. And as a good businessman, he probably looks at the event pavilion as a profit center. In other words, he wants to have it make money, which means he needs to run a lot of events. And that means more events than three or four per season. And if we don't have restrictions or noise pollution, that means that he will run most likely the music until midnight. And that will reduce significantly the quality of life in the community. I understand that a country noise, a county noise ordinance makes sense if you're actually in the in the county in quotation marks with significant distances between homes or between homes and event venues. For better or worse, the country club is located in the midst of a residential community with a lot of houses. And I think as an act of good neighborliness, we should be willing to compromise on a on a noise ordinance that is in line with what what has been customary practice. In other words, ten o'clock. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Gretchen Sukla, followed by Joe DiNardo.
Good evening. I'm Gretchen Suko. I live at six oh eight Marshall Street in Lexington. I had emailed my comments to the board, but I failed to send them to you, Mr. Whitmore. So I can forward them to you. I didn't realize I was supposed to do that.
That's fine.
In any case, and also Dr. Lyons and a previous person made made most of my points. I'm concerned about how the grass is going to be removed. I feel like it's very different than maintaining the course. I feel that that amount of chemical going on to the grass to to kill it and then on to the new grass to establish it is has not happened in quite some time. And I am concerned about the health of the creek, which is already impaired, and about the health of the neighbors that have wells on the property. I won't read all my comments. It's about all the health problems associated with these chemicals, which are quite numerous. And research continues to prove that these these all the all of these chemicals and both the active and the inert are very toxic for us and for the environment. So I'm recommending two amendments to the conditions. One is, I feel like it is not clear that it is the results of the test that should be made available to the county and to the the owners that have wells. I think it's just it's an editing thing, but I would just like it to be quite clear that we need the results. And I would like something in there about how the general public can access this information. I agree that it should be provided sooner. And then I agree with Dr. Lyons that we need some kind of recourse if the results are concerning. In my letter, I suggested that we could look to the EPA, the Virginia Department of Health, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality to set that standard. I don't know which is. to set that standard. I don't know which is the best agency. Perhaps Mr. DiNardo will be able to comment on that. But I absolutely agree that we need to have something in there that says, okay, so we, we do have concerning numbers. Let's choose a different method for going forward. So we don't continue to contaminate the nearby waters. The last thing I'll say is this is especially important because just like most of Rockbridge County, we're talking about karst. And it's not, it's not like other terrains, you know, the, the ground and the surface water are more easily affected by contaminants because of the terrain and part of the golf course redesign is actually on a wetland. So it's just a little bit more risky to put these chemicals under those conditions. Thank you.
The next speaker is Joe DiNardo, followed by Tom Kontos.
Evening. I'm Joe DiNardo. My background is in toxicology. I've been a toxicologist for about 50 years for the personal care industry and a variety of other industries as well. I've went through about, I don't know, several thousand different chemicals that I've evaluated over the years as well as final products before they get out to consumers. And your questions, supervisor Lyons, are brilliant. You do need to know what doses should I be concerned about? Where do we have problems? So as a toxicologist, I would tell you, there's two different ways I do this. One, I can look to the toxicology group. We have a national toxicology group called ATSDR. And basically they set standards for human exposure based on either carcinogenicity, if there's carcinogenic data and/or other health kinds of data. And they come up with different, different standards based on the actual research and studies that are done. Then there's another set of standards which our governments use. We have EPA, Virginia Department of Health, FDA, DEQ and all of those people. So as a toxicologist, I have been fighting with these people for many, many years because the doses that they allow in our streams and the fish tissue in our air are significantly higher than what toxicologists would recommend. So for instance, with the exception of the EPA on this particular one, things like PFOSs, which are on your list of concern. The EPA says that there are no safe ways of exposure. There are no safe levels, especially for PFOA and PFOS. They are very carcinogenic. PFOA is carcinogenic at seven parts per quadrillion, not per trillion. So that is point 007 parts per trillion. That is about 570 times less than what EPA sets their standard at. Okay. For safety in humans. The same with PFOS, the carcinogenic level is roughly about one part per trillion. And there are several other health issues that are around two parts per trillion, same with PFOA. But again, the EPA will tell you that based on all of the data that we've known, and there are literally thousands of papers that are published on this, that there is no safe level of exposure. So one, that's the reason why PFOS is there. And I can certainly give you these numbers and write them down and give you different kinds of concepts to understand. The thing with glyphosate is somewhere, I think the ATSDR puts it somewhere around between 100 and 300 parts per billion, but I can go back and reconfirm that and do that. But the, and of course, any of the heavy metals are all laid out in a normal health. Okay. We all understand. We saw Michigan go through their lead exposures and things of that nature. We have a significant mercury problem in our country as well, from burning coal and so forth of that nature. So all of those things do have standards, all of them. It's a little tricky because if you ask somebody like me as a toxicologist, I'm going to stay a little bit more on the prudent side because I'm concerned as opposed to, you know, going with government side, which takes into account industry and so forth. So, but anyway, I'm out of time, but I will be happy to answer any questions if you like. I can write those concentrations up. I can give you guidelines. I can tell you. The biggest issue is of course liability. And the thing you should remember is that there are basically $10 billion in lawsuits on glyphosate that have been already settled. There are 67,000 additional lawsuits that are going to case right now that need to be settled. And the same with PFOS. PFOS has about $13.7 billion that have already been paid out. And there are literally hundreds of thousands of cases.
Thank you. Where, where, where do you live?
Oh, I'm sorry. I live in Vesuvius. I'm in, just that I actually end up at the very last house in Rockbridge County of Irish Creek Road.
Thank you.
But I'm still in the county.
The next speaker is Tom Kontos, followed by Bob Biersack.
Thank you. I live in the city of Lexington. I am an architect planner and I most recently worked for UVA on the reconstruction of the Birdfield Golf Course and building for UVA Athletics Golf Teams. And I want to thank the county staff. I think they did a really thorough professional job in looking at the project and its impacts. And I think the project is going to be a great asset if it's well planned. I think the concern I have really is about the process and some of the things I've heard just don't align with what I see in the ordinance, particularly 708.043, which says if the non-conforming use is either discontinued or abandoned for two years or is superseded by a permitted use, and this is a use permitted by special exception. Then immediately it, 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 the structure and premises immediately shall not thereafter be used except in the, within the regulations of the district which is located. So my reading of that seems to say, the day that you approve this, it's now got to operate as a country club, which has certain restrictions. The list of uses that are there do not include, as it's been noted, special, special events and does not include private school. And you had, you had a big go around with this on the Quail Ridge Shooting Club. If you go back and read that, I mean, it's pretty clear that those two things need to be addressed. So to, to me, the sensible approach is not to kind of piecemeal and keep coming back and back and back again. But, but just to make all the necessary amendments, that is. And now I would include in that removing the restrictions on the category of ownership. Because it's not really clear to me how the current LLC is, is, is not really qualified to, to file as a 501(c)(7) as the old club did. The members of a member are not members of the club. So it's not really clear what membership means in that. There's, there's a lot of issues related to that. So I don't think they can fly, file a 992 in the current, I'm not sure what the intent is, but I assume that they would need to form a membership organization if that's the intent. And then, and then of course, allowing special events and allowing both private and public school uses. And we did all of these things at Birdfield. We had all those approvals. And then the other issue is that the city of Lexington also considers this to be a non-conforming use. Which means if the project is delayed and, and we, we spent I don't know, 20 months there because you've got to see, you know, you seed this thing. It's not, you're not putting down sod. If you get delayed by weather or any kind of other issues. After 24 months, the city is, may consider it to be abandoned or discontinued. And then you've got a 16-hole golf course. So I think that would be something I'd want to address before I invest 114 million. Can I just say one more thing about acoustics? Typically, I, I believe that when you approve a special exception, it then exempts it from the noise ordinance. And that you need to state those conditions in your special exception. Typically, the background level for noise in residential areas is about maybe 55 decibels during the day. A paddle for, for pickleball is about 85 decibels. It's a logarithmic scale. So that's, that 30 decibels difference is 1,000 times the sound intensity. Now your ear doesn't perceive it quite that way, but it is a significant increase and usually 40 decibels at night. So it'd be a reasonable background level. So I think you, planning is never really an acceptable way of, of noise reduction, particularly, particularly at, at certain frequencies, you know, 600 hertz, whatever that you're producing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be Bob Biersack, followed by Jeff Thompson.
I'm Bob Biersack. I live in the Karst Creek District and I'm the president of the Board of Rockbridge Conservation. I'm going to take this just a little bit broader and be brief. This is a case where everything's been said, but not everyone said it yet. I'm going to try to avoid that problem. What we're concerned about is, is this watershed, which is pretty fundamental to the, to the importance of this community. Woods Creek is, this flows through the city and, and forms a very basic element in the experience of the people who live in the city and also in the county and south and west of the city. So it's an important consideration and it's an impaired stream. We already know for reasons that have nothing to do with the golf course. As you point out, there, there are other kinds of usage in agriculture and other ways. That's why the testing program is important in the first place and it's why it should begin before the, the work begins. So that we can establish a baseline for understanding what the state of that stream is now. And, and evaluate how it changes during the course of the construction. And so that was the aim of that. And, and I also want to say that I appreciate the work that the county's done. The staff has been very supportive and the, and the ownership organization has, has been, reached out to us and we hope to continue those conversations and communications. And obviously there are skills and experiences all over the county that we can take advantage of and to make this project as good as it can be. So the testing regime is important. It's also important to understand the impact that these chemicals may have on the watershed and on the land. And it's a knowable thing. It's something we can understand. The, the materials that are used in the construction and the conduits and some of the ways that the water flows through the course also very important to make sure that they don't include some of these toxic materials that would, would have a big impact forever. For as long as that material is in the ground. That's important. Another consideration that, that, that was, that we, we communicated to the planning commission that wasn't considered. And I suspect it's probably because it may be outside the scope of this particular special exception. Has to do with the amount of water that actually gets used by the golf course in, in, on a regular basis during the year for irrigation purposes. And obviously in drought situations, the impact of big withdrawals of water from, from the watershed can be important downstream. I own about a half a mile of, of stream on my property in, in Karst Creek. I can't take all the water out of that stream. Somebody would come to visit me. It's a shared, it's a community resource. It's not, it's not mine because it passes through my land. It's that I have an obligation to, to make sure that its quality is maintained, that I don't pollute it. Because it's going somewhere else. And the same kind of consideration are to apply here. I think I'm, I'm optimistic because the university now has a pretty big stake in a very large portion of the full Woods Creek watershed by the, by the campus itself. And now this new piece of land, which is substantial. And I think that can be a positive force going forward as we work through this.
Next we will have Jeff Thompson, followed by Barbara Walsh.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Thompson. My wife and I live at the intersection of New Cameron Drive and Country Club Drive. And I just wanted to make a statement about that particular intersection. The increase of traffic that this development will actually bring is certainly of concern to us. I can personally attest to having sat there many evenings and heard excessive amounts of traffic come through that area already. There are some degradations that are going on to the road right there at that particular point. There's a huge drop off to the right. And we've seen a couple of vehicles actually almost fall into, off the side of the road there. As well as coming down the hill of New Cameron towards Country Club Drive, there's some erosion already going on, on either side. It's a relatively steep area. There's a lot of water runoff down through there. So the road itself, Country Club Drive is not very wide, as probably most of you already are aware. And what I would tell you is that if you were to put an increased amount of traffic on there, certainly heavy equipment, which I'm assuming would be involved in some of the construction that's going to go on. That would definitely be a concern there, especially trying to make that sharp turn. So I would like to request that there be some form of a traffic study or traffic flow analysis that be looked at for that particular corner. I can tell you that I did speak to the residency administrator, Susan Hammond over at BDOT and she told me that she was not aware that that had been done. And that it was up to the developer to actually request that be done. So one other aspect that I would like to mention is parking. The parking enforcement right now, as I understand it, they haven't decided who is actually going to be there. Portions of this development are both along in, in Lexington City as well as out in the county. So I think that would be another concern that we should be looking at to make sure that there was an understanding of how that enforcement would take place. Since there are very limited areas to pull off and there should be no parking out in the residential areas along those roadways as I understand it. So that's all. Thank you.
The next speaker is Barbara Walsh.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Walsh. I live at 301 McLaughlin Street in the city of Lexington. Woods Creek goes through my backyard. I'm about a half mile downstream from the golf course. I'm speaking tonight as an individual concerned citizen and as a hydrogeologist by profession. I did submit my comments rather late today. So I just go through them in summary. And then if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. But first I want to acknowledge the
Will you speak into the, yes. No, just towards you. Or pull it towards you.
There. Well, this is the important part. I want to acknowledge the outstanding work of county planning staff. Both Chris Slayton and Neil Whitmore have been just exceptional in their responsiveness to requests from citizens like me for information and discussing the complexities of this very complicated project. So I just want to make that statement. Appreciation. I have two new conditions that I would like to request that the supervisors consider and two tweaks on the existing conditions that are in the pack. The first new condition, which I think is a major one for its protect, it's for the need to protect neighbors and the environment. And it expands on some of the comments that Bob Biersack made about the quantity of water. This is not the quality. This is the actual amount that's used for irrigation. Golf courses are extremely large users of water, just as a land use. The most recent year on record with the DEQ, LGCC used 147 million gallons of water for irrigation. And that's a lot in a small watershed like Woods Creek. It comes from both surface water and from groundwater. And that's the aspect I want to address and that I hope will be addressed with a new condition. There needs, I, I, I think and would request an added condition to address the potential impacts of the quantity of groundwater used. In other words, as the course withdraws groundwater from their property, the neighboring wells, it's going to depress the water table of the aquifer. And neighboring wells that may not be as deep as the golf course well can find themselves with limited water or actually with dry wells. And I think that that's an impact that we need to be aware of and take precautions against to limit that. I think the golf course is really lucky that they have so many sources of water. They actually have the surface water, the groundwater. And then also they have city water from the Maori River. So that would be another possible way to blend in the amounts of water they need without affecting the neighbors. I won't go into the others, but I will say, I mentioned that I'm a half mile downstream. And these guys arrived on my yard in the space of a week last month. I would like to see a new condition that requires the facility to up their efforts to prevent stray balls from being carried downstream in Woods Creek. It may seem like a minor thing, but according to the Wildlife Center of Virginia, these are major hazards for wildlife. And as they degrade, they're a source of toxic chemicals as well. I'll stop there because my time is over, but my comments are in writing. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And that is all that we have signed up.
Anybody online?
No one with a raised hand.
Is there anybody else that would like to make any comment?
Ryan Buford, homeowner here in Lexington. And I just wanted to support and echo some of the concerns that my neighbors here relative to sound reproduction as opposed to different audience or ordinance, excuse me. And I speak from, as a retired law enforcement officer, so I kind of know about sound reproduction, in particular when we're talking about decibels. And I think I heard something in the area of 20 And I think I heard something in the area of 20 was mentioned. Is that correct? That seems to be a little bit inaccurate. And I say this because I'm the other six, not the six that was by the pool. I'm six mile court, right across the way. So what I'm talking to you about, I come to you with empirical evidence. I, I'm glad that someone else came up with something that they could show because I too literally have the balls to prove it. And so I didn't want to bring them here, but there's a bunch of them. And I'm talking about it when I, my first found out about this, this changes, first of all, and I'm all for it. Okay, I like progression. However, when I heard that there's not that many houses in the area. That seems sort of dismissive when my house is the primary right off of the driving range. And it has been scary over the last six years that I've been there. So I'm happy to hear that there's, there'll be a bit of a change. What I'm not happy to hear is that the acoustic panels are going to cost too much. That to me is unacceptable. And that's why I'm up here today to say to you folks who are the stewards of us in way of public policy to, yeah, do the right thing. Just look out for our interests in that manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll ask.
Okay, typically there's the, the applicant.
Absolutely. No question about that. But I can also close the public hearing and then ask him to come up. So I, I am going to close the public hearing. And now Mr. Orson, would you please come up? We might have some questions for you. One that I heard, we're, we're going to just ask you questions. We're going to ask the question. We're going to have a few things to address. Absolutely. This is, this is friendly. Everything's friendly here. The first one, can you help me understand the membership question that was brought up earlier?
I can, but better John can. We are a membership organization and they have done work to clarify that.
Yeah, for, for a membership organization, our definition of country club does not require it to be a not-for-profit membership organization, which would be the 501(c)(7) s. It can be a for-profit entity. It just has to be a membership organization. Meaning it exists for the benefits of its members, receiving fees and providing particular services. And so that's, so whether or not there, there are 501(c)(7) is irrelevant to our determination as to whether we grant them the, the special exception for.
Well, I was wondering more of, right now we have membership, but does that mean that now, now WNL is the membership? So in terms of, you know.
The, the current structure is that you have a, an existing entity, the entity which acquired this golf course, also acquired the membership. So it is now, it is the membership organization as of now. And for us, for our purposes, they can, even though it's not the, the pre-existing club, which is the membership organization, they still have the right to operate when, under the pre-existing non-conforming uses. The subsequent owner can until such time that those non-form uses cease to exist for two years or, or they, or the structures used to do so are destroyed. So they have the right to do that. But it's a, but the current, the current use is, it doesn't matter whether it's a membership organization that's using it now or not. Because it's a, it's working under the pre-existing non-form use, which has no definition for what they do. But they can't expand what their use is until, if they do expand, or if they were, for example, if they start destroying the golf course right now, prior to receiving permission to be a country club, that just means they can't ever run the golf course there anymore. So any destruction to, to existing buildings or expansion of existing buildings, our existing uses aren't allowed for pre-existing non-form uses.
So we're technically a membership organization, but we are in fact, in fact, we are a membership organization. I'm a member. We have members. We are keeping as many members as we can. We are adding as many members as we can. We are still the golf course that has members, local members. We are not WNL. This is not WNL. This is not a WNL thing. This is a joint venture to have a membership organization for this community to have a country club and a golf course.
But it would also include WNL in, in whatever definition.
And BMI in whatever definition and SVU in whatever definition.
I'm talking about this particular.
And the Ayers family in whatever definition. If you would come and be a member, we would love to have you. Just as we would love to have every local family to be a member. Absolutely.
And, and if I may, the, the membership organization, organization does have the right to set who is a member, who's not a member. That's their determination within their, however, you, the, this is a legislative act. I'm part of the board of supervisors. And so we don't even have to consider what's going on in the past because that was all non-form use. What we're looking at is, as a going forward. And my position and interpretation of the, of us granting, if we determine now today or some future date to grant them a special exception to be considered a country club, they will not, that special exception will not be applicable until such time that they have completed the golf course and that they have completed the clubhouse, which are required under our definition to exist prior to being, being considered a country club. Which means the issue of membership organization is really more important as of the time when the golf club is done. And as of time that the clubhouse is done, because they have to have three things in order to be able to be a country club. Actually, a membership organization that must have a, a clubhouse and must have a golf course. And then there's a list of additional things they can do, but those are the three things that have to be in place to be considered a country club.
Okay. Absolutely. Let's all take a five minute and then I'll have you back up and. Thank you.
Hi, yeah.
We're.
No, we're, we're, we're sorry, Ms. Orson, we are.
Oh, no.
Back at it, so, um, where are we? Any questions here?
But, yeah.
Okay, let's hear.
Yeah, so kind of in reverse order, just going up, so the driving range, of course, is moved to the internal part of the course. If you look back at the original thing that we looked at, the golf course layout, on kind of the lower right, well, you're not looking at, but is the practice facility and the driving range. So the driving range is not where it is now, we're not gonna be driving golf balls, hopefully no more golf balls. Golf balls show up in weird places, but no more will show up on that side, because we're not golfing on that side of the road at all. Uh, groundwater, um, uh, we believe that we won't have to utilize the well. It's more expensive for us to utilize the well for irrigation. We don't think we're gonna have to use it at all anymore. We're putting a state-of-the-art irrigation system in, we're gonna irrigate more acres of grass, but we're gonna do it a lot more, uh, technologically advanced. Every, every head will be controllable, and so we won't overwater areas just to make sure someplace gets watered. So we're gonna have a very expensive and very state-of-the-art irrigation system. We will, uh, use less irrigation water than we are currently using. And so we don't think we're gonna be using the well for irrigation at all. But we do have a withdrawal permit from the state. You have to get a withdrawal permit if you're gonna pull waters of the US from the creeks. And, uh, um, we have that permit, and we are updating that permit for this. And we are ninety percent, the dreaded ninety percent through that process of getting that permit. So we're gonna be fully permitted by DEQ for the amount of water we can get during drought periods. That's limited by the state to protect downstream, uh, uh, landowners along the creek. So that's, that's a permit from the state. The issue with the city, the city wrote a letter, and I hope it's in your package, doesn't matter. But early on, a, a tiny bit of our golf course is in the city, actually probably two holes of the golf course is in the city. There's no infrastructure with it, there's no clubhouse, there's no nothing, it's just golf course. And so the city wrote us a letter saying we have no issues with this at all. And in fact, for erosion and sediment control and stormwater management, they said, since the county's gonna be reviewing it anyway, let's let the county review the whole thing, rather than have two different jurisdictions. So, um, Neil can provide you that letter from the city saying there are no issues with the city as far as, uh, the land use. Uh, membership issues, we talked, setbacks from creeks for all of these things. There are, uh, uh, many agencies that have been mentioned that cover setbacks as far as application of everything to a creek, and that's on the label. And Peter Danaher, our golf course superintendent, is right up on that. Whatever your feelings of government agencies telling you, doesn't matter. What they tell us is absolutely what he will follow. That's his professional creed to do that. The, uh, that setbacks from the creeks, the results, we will make them known. If we've got to do the testing, we'll make them known right away. We'll figure out some way to post them or something, uh, get them to, to somebody so we can make those, uh, done right away. Going back to the top of the comment, uh, uh, words matter. Someone said glyphosate is a known carcinogen. Glyphosate is not a known carcinogen, it's simply not. That's was false, it's not. It, it is not a known carcinogen. If you look up the list, there's a billion known carcinogens. Uh, among those are sawn oaks, for instance, but glyphosate is not. But that's my rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Orson. Questions?
So what did you say?
I said, any questions from, from?
Not just the golf performance center, is that your tee boxes for your driving range?
Is tee boxes for the driving range, but it's also the building where we, in inclement weather, we can be inside and hit to the outside through garage doors, yep, yep.
I feel that we have a lot of information here, um, a lot to work through. How are you feeling? We have a lot of information here, a lot that I feel that we could tweak, and how are you feeling, gentlemen?
Well, I'll reiterate my concerns. One, I have no concern with how the golf course is currently being managed and taken care of. I think wherever your head grounds keeper does everything he's supposed to do. My concern is the construction period where there'll be more chemicals than usual used. And I think it's, there is a very simple remedy to that, is that we test the water coming in, and we test the water going out, and do that now. It might be bad coming in, and it might be equally bad going out, and that's not the fault of the country club. And then during the construction period, you continue those tests to see if it's already bad, it shouldn't get worse. And if it's, if it's already acceptable, it should stay acceptable. I'm not saying anybody should be fixing something that, but I, I think we need to know what's coming in, what's going out. And, and that's only to be monitored during the construction phase, because look at your track record. You know, they've managed the course well, they take care, they're not gonna dump chemicals. First, uh, they're gonna watch out for their own safety, and there's some pretty severe penalties if they were not to do it correctly. So I think that's one fairly simple way to do it. The other concern is sound, and I think there's a simple way to do that, too. It ends at ten o'clock at night, and you put sound barriers on the pickle court, ball courts. I think it's a reasonable compromise, uh, and while neither side will be totally happy, both sides will give a little bit, and the project can move forward. And I think that's the way neighbors should work.
Being short two members. I would like to hear from them, their thoughts on this before I would make a decision tonight.
I would agree there. I would like to give our staff a little bit of time to tidy this up before we, um, before we move on.
Is there any way we can test the water within the next month and just see where we are starting?
I believe the condition that you have in front of you calls for us to test before we start.
Right.
It's a condition.
But, um, I'm not talking any as big as mass of what it's caused for with all the wells. I just wanna know the streams that are coming in is the same stream that's leaving. The water might already be bad, and if that's the case, it's, it's no reason to hold up the project. Uh, but it gives us a starting point on the streams running through your property of where they're at, and then monitor that just during construction.
I believe that's covered in the condition, and it's, it's back on, uh, condition seven.
Okay, and that covers the streams?
Would be the pre-testing shall be performed prior to the first application of glyphosate associated with initial killing of grass on the golf course. Uh, and then it goes back to, it references back to pond A and point one.
Okay.
In that, in that condition.
Is that showing the water coming into the course? See, my, I just wanna, I wanna make sure that if we're, if the people surrounding the course are not doing what they're supposed to, and they're sending these bad chemicals into this stream, that people aren't pointing the finger. And that's all during construction, and so we should know what's going in and what's coming out. And then that should be, that should stay the same.
So we're testing at the first pond and at the last pond for the condition?
And then also the map is, the map is up there for, for reference, so.
I think that extending our just, our decision, we can make this decision in June, and we can make sure that all of your, your concerns are, are laid out in here. And I know we have a few others, and I know there, there was actually one thing, forgive me for, for bringing it up. Somebody mentioned the actual burial of, of structures that might actually be, you know, um, not good for the environment as they degrade. Is that, is there anything in this construction to worry about in that?
To bury parts of our building?
No, buried constructions in the course that degrade over time. There, there was a mention of that, and I'm just checking to make sure there's not i- anything that's not permanent to that.
I didn't follow that either, but certainly we would be using HDPE lines for irrigation and PVC lines for sanitary and water as every project in Rockbridge County.
Sure. And so back on the water testing, on one, one few, a couple more points. Number eight dealt with the testing, or, excuse me, number seven dealt with the testing of sediment and streams. And then number eight goes to private wells, and the landowner can notify the Office of Community Development that they would like to have their well on that list once the special exception permit has been approved prior to construction. Or rather, the first application of glyphosate, rather.
Well, you requested tabling for further discussion.
This is, and I don't wanna harp on it, so they're gonna test before the first application, correct?
If.
That's it, that's in one of the things, just.
For those, for the streams and sediment, and then if the landowner desires for the well.
But they're not gonna test until they get approved, correct?
For, for the wells.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just talking about the stream, so if, if, if we're.
It is before, it is, it is before.
If it's important and you want us to go test, we'd be glad to go test now.
I'd like to hear it now, so we can tell everybody, this is, this is what it was before we ever started construction. That's all I'd like to hear.
I don't, I don't know how far out a testing agency is, but, but, but we'd be happy to move right forward.
I'd just like to see the condition of the water now. And if it's the same coming in, it's going out, then I have, what, good or bad, I have no problem moving forward.
Think you're covered by the condition, but we'd be glad to do it tomorrow, initiate it tomorrow.
Right, thank you.
Correct, but we're still working on these. Presumably, we would have thirty days to tighten up anything or to loosen anything or to make any changes here to these, and I wouldn't want you testing something that was not actually in your, the agreement.
I used offer at the request of, of the supervisor, so.
So that, that's.
Rescind my offer.
Well, I wouldn't suggest me test everything.
But it is before the project begins. That's, that's the critical thing, before the project can, and I think seven, uh, deal, deals with that.
Well, and then if we do that, we have to push. If, if they have to, then what's the purpose of the test? Well, if we say, go ahead, they're gonna do the test, what are we looking at?
It's a baseline, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's.
Just a baseline, so we're, it doesn't matter what it shows.
Then it's tested after, and during the project, during the project, it is tested. So we will know if there are changes, and the community will know those results.
My thing is, I think we really only, they really only need to do the testing during the construction phase. Uh, uh, and I think we go out, how many years?
Five years, I believe, and, and we hashed that out. Planning Commission did a nice job, we, we discussed that quite a bit while I stood here, and we went through that. And it seemed like a reasonable, it, it was more than we wanted to do, obviously, but it, 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 it seemed reasonable, and even at five years, I think it's a sunset that we actually have to do something to sunset it. But it's not the end of the world, uh, we're curious about it as well. So it was, we had, we, we worked hard on that, and it wasn't, it was a compromise, and I think it was a reasonable one, and we will do that. And then at five years, especially depending on the results, but at five years, we will do whatever it was and decided that would sunset that requirement, yeah.
No, and appreciate that. So, gentlemen, can we, are you, we agreed? That we will move this, and I believe that for thirty days, we are probably with, not within the fourteen.
Yeah, I'm sorry, a, a motion would need to be made for the, to move it to next meeting, second didn't go down. But yes, you have, you have to vote within thirty days of the close of the hearing.
All right.
And the public hearing is closed.
Right.
If, if, if most of your concerns are about the special events, then of course we'll be coming back for that. Hopefully, hopefully smoothly, but we will be coming back for special events, uh, uh, as required by Chris's determination. So if most of your concerns are regarding that, then we would love to walk out of here knowing that we can proceed with the, the better part of our project and coming back for special events and hammering some of that stuff out. Having only three members.
Correct. I only have three members here, here, and four voting.
But we would love to walk out of here knowing that we can move ahead with our project. We submitted this thing back in the winter, the middle of winter, and we went to Planning Commission three times, um, for this, and we really hashed these things out. So I understand that you guys are seeing this for the first time, and it's a lot of information. But we would love to walk out of here knowing that our, that this plan is okay, knowing that we're coming back for special events, and we'll work that out with you guys, but that's what we would love.
Well, well, what I would love is to make sure that this is the best plan possible and for, for the community. And I think waiting for thirty days is what, at, at least I, I feel comfortable with. Give staff a little more time to tweak anything that, that might, uh, that might be necessary, or, and keep in mind, I support, we've all said, or maybe not all of us, but many of us here support this, this project. I support the, I think that there'll be really some wonderful things that'll come out of this and benefits to water quality, like the, the watering, uh, the system that you will have in place that will create much less runoff. This is the first I've heard about the seventy-five percent capture. I would like to hear more of that, um, understand more of that before, um, moving on. But I, I think we're, from my point of view, we're close, but I would like to be, have this really gone over and give our staff that time as well.
So you mentioned thirty days, to be clear, are you, are you asking to come back on the ninth or the twenty-third?
Can we advertise for the ninth?
Wouldn't have to advertise.
Yeah, you don't have to advertise.
Correct, so, but in terms of we, so that was only.
You can just add it to the agenda.
So we can add it to either, so.
Either or both, you know.
Well, then I'd like to add it to the second June meeting, the twenty-third. I think that would give the appropriate time.
I, I think they've spent enough time, and I, if we're gonna postpone it, we need to make a decision as soon as possible on the ninth. Uh, I mean, we can't control other people's schedules, but, you know, this is kinda time-sensitive, too. And, and like I said, I'd vote for it tonight if they turn the sound off at, at ten o'clock. We got guaranteed water testing and they quieted pickleball courts. But I, I, I don't think we, we can get all that done in proper verbiage, but I'd like to put it to rest by the next meeting. That's just me.
Uh, Mr. Wood. Can you, i- is the staff, would, is there? And please tell.
I think we could, from a technical standpoint, we could accommodate either date.
Okay.
Either the ninth or the, the twenty-third, so.
Do we know if our member will be back?
Uh, I have, I have no indication that either, uh, either member will not be there.
And, and we do have the question of that we still have a contract on the existing. We have a contract on the existing tennis courts until twenty-twenty-six, and I would like that to be dealt with as well.
Yeah, that, I just ran out of time today, and, uh, Ms. Witten was able to point out to me. I thought I was looking at a contract with the county, and it's, uh, it's actually with the schools. So we'll have to track that down with the school division.
It would be appropriate to ask the applicant if they could also check, because they should have records of that, that contract. And it would be a discussion between the applicant and the school board, the, the school, if there's any changes to the contract, which would, which would inform your, your vote as to, as to where the plan is to tear down the tennis courts or what time.
We can do the ninth, and if we're, we still can postpone that decision to, to the next meeting if.
If required.
So, is that okay with you?
And the, 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 yeah, the proper motion would be a motion to postpone to such and such date, and then the second in the vote.
All right.
I make a motion, we table this to the June ninth meeting.
Is there a second? Mr. Day, will you second that motion, or you? He's thinking.
I would have preferred twenty-third, but I'll second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yeah.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. While we will move on to the.
The next scheduled public hearing is Cassandra V. Harding, four oh five McClure Boulevard. Fairfield, Virginia has made an application for a special exception permit to develop and operate a dog training facility, private school, in the agricultural and general uses A-two zoning district. The property is owned by Cassandra V. Harding and is located near the south side of McClure Boulevard, Route seven twenty-four, approximately point seven seven miles east of the intersection of McClure Boulevard and Sterit Road, Route seven seventeen. The property is further identified as tax map number thirty-nine dash A dash three A, seven point zero seven acres per tax records, and is located in the Walker's Creek Magisterial District. The property is located in the agricultural and general uses zoning district per section six oh three point oh three dash twenty of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. Schools, private, are used by special exception in the A-two zoning district. While the regulations do not define private schools, section three oh one of the regulations states, except as otherwise provided herein, all words shall have the customary dictionary meaning. For Webster's Dictionary, a school is defined as an organization that provides instruction. Furthermore, Webster's Dictionary defines a private school as a school that is established, conducted, and primarily supported by non-governmental agency. On April the ninth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission held its public hearing. There was one public comment made. Concerns expressed included the noise and traffic impacts on neighboring properties and requests for further development of plans. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the application with the following conditions. And there again, there are a number of conditions, there are seven conditions associated. Number one is substantial compliance with systematic plan titled Tax Map Number thirty-nine dash A dash three A, seven point zero seven acres per tax records showing the existing buildings and fences. Condition number two, individual day training activities are limited from nine AM to five PM, three times per week. All individual training activities shall be conducted within the existing building. Individual training activities are limited to four dogs on the property at one time, excluding the landowner's dogs. Condition number three, group training shall be limited to, from nine AM to five PM, four days, four, excuse me, four times per month. Group training activities are limited to four dogs on the property at one time, excluding the landowner's dogs. Condition number four, train dogs is limited to general obedience and or training of service dog classes. No steady-to-shot training shall be allowed. Condition number five, boarding operations shall be limited to customers of the private school and no more than five consecutive nights during the period of training, limited to individual day activities. Condition number six, compliance with section thirteen point, excuse me, thirteen zero three point oh three, general lighting requirements, and section thirteen zero three point oh four, general design requirements of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. Condition number seven, relocation of existing gate to provide for adequate turnaround on the Harding property. And since the Planning Commission meeting, there have been additional comments received from Elizabeth O'Brien, Veronica Sanchez, Evan Golladay, Karen Parker, Sandra Height, Marissa Charlie, and Tiffany Logan.
Thank you. Hello.
And all of those have been provided to you.
Yes, we've all seen them.
Thank you very much, my name's Cassandra Harding. I wanted to thank you for letting me come before you to discuss my special exception request for a private school of specialized instruction on my property. I'm a multi-certified strictly positive reinforcement fear-free dog trainer specializing in raising and training of working, service, and therapy dogs. Having a business license would allow me to. Having a business license would allow me to work within my training facility on skills that require heavy bulky equipment difficult to bring in an automobile, such as wheelchairs, ramps, and walkers. Additionally, my property allows for a fantastic opportunity for distraction-free training, which is very important for foundation training. The building is fully enclosed, climate-controlled, and fully insulated with shock-absorbing rubber flooring, making training a far more comfortable process for clients who have mobility or medical disabilities. As a disabled person myself, training service dogs and therapy dogs is very personal to me. I am a retired nurse and due to my disabilities and being a recent empty nester, I have been able to dedicate most of my time to the science and the art of dog training. I additionally enjoy supporting the Rockbridge County community with my therapy dogs in local nursing homes, hospices, universities, local free health clinics, and the Boys and Girls Club, just to name a few. The original intention of my training building was to have a dedicated training space for my personal training use and to have a space to socialize with my dog training friends. We love to get together a couple of times a week to work on our personal dogs and to nerd out over behavior and learning theories, bounce ideas off of each other, and set up antecedent structural setups and enjoy each other's company, of course. These get togethers are not part of the, of the business, but inevitably word has gotten out and I am starting to get a few requests to train service and therapy dogs locally. I've been working with two disabled clients pro bono in the meantime, due to wanting to meet developmental milestones for these important service dog prospects. It would be fantastic to provide this service for our community within a business structure. As I mentioned in my letter to the board, my attorney has strongly indicated that the business parameters should be broadened to include my personal use time. I did not quite understand this when we met in front of the Planning Commission and I hope that the letter that I was able to write for the board, you can understand the history of what I've been dealing with, with some neighbors. As I mentioned in my letter to the board, my, oops, I already said that, I'm sorry. My property is seven fully fenced acres broken into four individually fenced sections within the acreage. It is extremely private on my property and my instruction will, will occur inside my finished metal training building. The property is surrounded by Ridge Valley alpacas and Mountain View Farm grazing land. There are at least five working livestock guardian dogs and many pet dogs in the surrounding properties around me, and I'm ever so pleased to say that my dogs and the dogs that come to my properly, property are absolutely not a source of nuisance noise. I actually had a birthday party for a friend this past weekend and we all had a chuckle that there was quite a bit of barking happening, but none were at the property. I submitted to the board a letter from my attorney, Mr. Kent Gibson, stating that the easement providing access to the landlocked property does not have any restrictions, business or otherwise. The easement road and slope have been stabilized, tarred and chipped, and a lovely rock drainage area has been installed at my cost. These improvements have improved the easement access and property value of my neighbor's property. The surveying estate's home is actually on the opposite side of their five acre property, so I don't think it's unreasonable to utilize the easement for occasional clients. Since the Planning Commission meeting, I have been able to install a turnaround on my property. The roadwork part has been completed and we are currently waiting on utilities to be marked to finish the required new fencing and move the entrance gate further onto the property. So while this isn't fully completed, it should be finalized in the next week or two. Additionally, my attorney has completed the paperwork for my LLC. I've purchased business insurance and am otherwise pleased to report that the outpouring of community support for my business has been heartwarming. We are so hopeful to be able to move forward with our mission if the board gives us approval. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
And in your packet are a number of schematics, and then we can also put one up here on the screen that shows the property and then the location of the training structure.
Did you mention that you, you provided a letter from Mr. Gibson to the board?
Uh, it was written to me and then I submitted it to the board via email.
It was part of the, the supplemental information that was included in the package.
Okay, gotcha. I thought there was something separate.
I missed the, it, it sounded as if you wanted to change in the conditions. Did I misunderstand?
That is correct. That's based on the strong recommendation of Mr. Kent.
Can you speak to that?
And I think it's, it's in the, the, the back part of the packet with those, those specifications. That was not part, the Planning Commission did not have those requests and so they did not entertain those and they are not part of the conditions set forth by the Planning Commission.
Exactly. So I would like to hear you speak to those as, if those.
And part of this would, do you, do you have some, I guess, reasons that you would like to add to the recommendations of the Planning Commission that you could present?
Yes. Yes, I've written down, um, based on my lawyer's recommendation, it is impossible to determine when I am conducting business and when I'm just using the property for my own personal use. And so on his suggestion, instead of having to be reported and come before you frequently, that I just make my parameters bigger so that it covers my personal use of the property as well.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't find these additions. I must be missing them here someplace. You have the additions.
You have my six, it's like a six-page letter and I do apologize. I was very wordy.
And this would be the one, it starts out with, so it'll be right after the photos of the training shop. And then it's dated April 28th, 2025. You share?
I, I, I have a printout of it.
I don't know how to share that one.
Coming up on the screen now. Can you zoom in just a bit now? There we go. Is there a certain point in this letter you'd like to refer to?
Um, there should be a one through nine section, bullet, bullet pointed. Probably the very last page. Oh, wait, there we go. It's right there.
So these requests are based on the, the recommendation made by the Planning Commission with your edits essentially to them.
Yes, it's, um, after, after Mr. Gibson saw the very limited scope, because the limited scope is truly what the business will look like. I'm retired and I don't want to be busy, so I really just want to be able to have a lesson here or there or a group lesson here or there, but I still want to continue to meet with my friends. And the worry for Mr. Gibson was that, that when my, you know, two or three friends come up with their dogs, that that's going to be reported as something that's not allowed.
Oh, I see.
And so he said, just broaden it as, as big as you can. So instead of nine to five, I did nine to nine, seven days a week instead of five days a week.
So, so that is, that's an expansion of what the Planning Commission.
Right, I, I, yes. I mean, I understand, I certainly understand your point. I just, I feel uncomfortable making this determination now without thoroughly getting feedback and, and how we should handle this.
I might note that you have the same option available to you on this one as you did the last one. Obviously, it's your all's prerogative.
There were a couple of questions based on the other one. Let me just start there. There we go. How do you walk your dog? I mean, it seemed that, that this would not allow you to walk a dog outside.
Yes.
That doesn't seem like a reasonable thing.
Yes.
So why isn't that in there that you can, I mean, would you, would you need, certainly a dog that you're working on or that you're, you're working with or the owners? How can they not, how do they, without, I mean, could we, could we add that with a collar or with a, with a lead, you could have dogs outside?
I mean, I, when I looked at Rockbridge County ordinance for dogs, there doesn't seem to be any limits on the number of dogs that you can have on a property. So that was part of my confusion is why am I losing some of my rights as a property owner to do things that I want to do on my own property when I'm not accepting money? You know, it's not a business thing that's happening, but when I asked that question to Mr. Gibson, he said it's not as clear-cut as that because of the history with the people in question. They're going to be constantly monitoring who's coming up and down your driveway. Why are they there? And, you know, so instead of me having to repeatedly defend myself, he just advised that we make the parameters bigger.
All right, and boarding. So tell me, you, you want to teach these, you know, dogs. Why does that, why does that include boarding? How, how does that work?
So I recently, one of the pro bono cases that I'm working on, the man is disabled and not really able to do all of the ups and downs and you know, what you have to do to train a puppy. It's a lot of bending, as you know, reward. And so he, he found it better if I did the board and train. So we did a three-week board and train where he came and got his dog on the weekends to enjoy the, the puppy. And then I did the work when he would pick up the dog on the Fridays, we would do a little mini lesson so that he would understand what we were doing. But he did not have, but at, by that point, the dog understands and does not need as much bending and twisting and all of that, because that's all been handled by me.
So that would be the kind of clients, they would leave the dog with you?
Yes.
Four, four clients at a time?
Oh, the, the reason it's four on the ground was for group lessons, because my building is not huge. I only really feel comfortable having, having a dog and an owner on each corner. It's about 1,500 square feet and that still allows for.
I meant the boarding. It seemed, doesn't this allow for four dogs to be boarded?
Oh, yeah, and I would never, one is all I want to board at a time.
Then, then you have no problem with that being limited.
I, I don't. And I have no, I have no kennels outside at all. I don't kennel dogs outside. They're always inside. I mean, obviously they have to go to the potty. We take them out. My dogs are exercised, but I don't really allow other people's dogs when they come to my property to be using all of my acreage. They're just into the building. We do our training and then they leave.
Okay. Well, gentlemen, how do you feel? I would love to entertain some of these things that you, that are, that are in your letter. Do you feel comfortable doing this now? Or would you like to postpone this one as well? Can we see that list one more time up there?
I'm sorry, the list of the requests?
Yes.
This is one through five and then there's six through nine on the next page.
So with the original conditions, there were seven points and the, they don't track or line up. They aren't just additions. There are some alterations in the middle as well.
And you'll find the original conditions in your board report.
Personally, that since they don't line up, unless we're going to go through them one by one tonight and try to make changes, I think it'd be better to table this. Give us time to look at it. You know, a lot of them seem pretty reasonable, but I don't, I don't think seven days a week. I don't think you want, really want seven days a week.
I just want the ability to use my, my building on my property.
Right.
Seven days a week.
Right.
Well, I think that exists. You're just dealing, you just don't want somebody that's unreasonable questioning your use. That, that's, but maybe that's not really what these things, how we should tailor a, a special exception based on, on a behavior that might be unreasonable.
And again, this, this applies to the business use, the special exception. So the, the other suggestion I might have is rather than you all having, trying to go through and poring through it and comparing line by line, I would suggest that, that Mr. Gibson or somebody take the conditions that were, that were passed on from the Planning Commission and rather than creating a new document to attract changes version on what you, what you were trying to see versus just having a whole new set of conditions on one sheet and the, and the board trying to look at both of them.
And just the one thing we need to be careful of is the, the applicant never suggests conditions that are not allowed to do so, or the way it's structured, conditions are imposed from our side, however. So comment, no, 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 that's fine. It just, we just want to make sure that procedure falls. So just the comments on the existing conditions to the, passed to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission then can recommend conditions to the board and the board then can make a decision. It shouldn't come from the applicant directly.
Yes, just to be clear, I was only saying so that.
Oh, no, 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 I agree, I agree. No, I agree completely.
Well. Okay. Do we, I guess we need a motion and a meeting. Do you have any problem with the first or the second?
Sooner the better. I have been doing pro bono work for like two months at this point.
So what more? Does, do you have a preference?
The, we, for the first.
Okay.
And just for the record, I'll retract my statement. I think you need to listen to your attorney.
About the contract changes, yes.
I'll, I'll make a motion to table this till June 9th meeting.
All right. Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much. All right. Are there any other board comments? Any other unfinished business?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Second. Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day. And I vote yes. Good evening, everyone.